It's an information. Informational meeting on DD six regarding repairs.
And it's just basically tree removal that's being requested for right now. About a quarter mile trees, I'm guessing, looks like a single roll. I've been up there and looked at it. Um, unless there's something else that you guys have that you want addressed. I think that's all we're looking at doing right now would be getting the trees out and getting them cleaned up.
Where is it? You're only taking part of the that section of phase, the quarter mile only takes you up to. Our fellows line and Alberton has got on the north and there's. Some trees on his and same ditch.
Okay, well, I all I could, I just, yeah, I didn't know that.
So you're you're only doing a half a job.
That's why everybody's here.
That's what we'd like to figure out what you guys want done.
But it's the four seventy.
North of four seventy fifty.
Yes, north four seventy fifth. So how far, I mean, the trees go up and around the end there a little bit.
North of him, there's a grove in there and it goes around the grove. Lot of smaller trees, trees in the whole thing.
Okay, but that's why we're here.
That's pretty much the end of the trees.
That's why we're here. You guys know more about the ditch than I do. Uh, Ron just come in and just was concerned with those trees falling down and eventually blocking. Blocking the flow of drainage. He's not requesting anymore, and I think all we're doing right now would be. Looking at probably cutting them, having them cut like we did down south there, John, like on yours and then wait a year or two and. Uh, the spray guy did tell us that these were too big to spray, um, just found that out a little while ago, so. The stitch was on the list probably to be sprayed last year, I guess, so he did not spray those, but he would have sprayed anything else that was smaller, so. But we'd get these cut down and then he generally waits a year and then comes back and. Kills them off or, you know, they can treat the stumps too this spring when they cut them, I don't know if that would probably maybe deter some of it.
How about removing the stones also?
I guess that's up to you guys and you know, at some point it gets to be a big enough job, we have to get engineering involved, but we. Trying to stay under that threshold unless there's, you know, if you guys know more about the ditch that needs work, that's what we need to know. And if that's, you know, if this is, I don't know if it'd be cheaper to have them yanked out or cut off. Um, it was pretty reasonable to have them cut. On DD ten down by Joyce down there, we did probably a half mile at least for. Uh, I think it was around forty thousand and then there'll be a little spraying on top of it.
If the trees are up on the top of the bank, it's not a problem cutting them. I'd say seventy five percent of your feet work here is way down in the slope.
Yeah, kind of looks like it's right on the edge of the slope, yeah.
So you gotta be kind of like a mountain goat to work in there.
Yes, they can cut them out of there and just reshape that section of ditch. We'll have to reseed it.
I'm thinking you'd be way ahead to go in there with. Backhoe and dig them out and re slope the ditch. And then you have less problem with them growing back to. They still need to be sprayed to keep control of future.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've got the county every three years. We know a third of the time, so every three years that the ditch should get sprayed and coming up there.
And this one would be moved, I mean, definitely. If you're gonna maintain the tree or if we just cut them off, we want to make sure that they don't.
Majority of the big trees are on the section of. Up on Ronnie Alberton section, there's trees all on there. Rushy, smaller stuff.
So how many?
Should be taken care of when they do this.
How many feet are you thinking, Jerry?
Well, on Alberton by county, it's about thirty five.
Thirty five trees, how many feet, total feet from say four hundred and seventy fifth street up to where you think you need to go? Half mile at most.
So you're going up and then around that curve.
Yeah, around the curve. It'd be pretty close to a half mile.
So even that should be well under the threshold. Now, it's, uh, I believe a hundred and.
Hundred and ninety six thousand and we have to get an engineer involved. Over there, over that, anytime over twenty thousand, you can, if it's up to the board, they can, we can get an engineer involved. Anytime we want over that.
When did that change? You give fifty dollars.
First of twenty three.
It just changed.
Just changed.
But it did change two years ago, it was like one thirty one. So it hasn't been fifty.
It's been creeping up.
Let me, let me ask you a foolish question. What's the difference between? Uh, drainage ditch, meaning manmade, and a creek as far as your responsibilities or somebody's responsibilities?
Well, generally, we don't have anything to do with a creek, as far as I know.
As far as I know, we don't.
Usually they're not part of the district, Doug.
Creek could be bested as a natural stream.
Yes, that's right, cuz.
But if it ties it ties in that there's nothing to be done on your, on the county's part.
So like if there was, you're talking like a section of.
You know, I, yeah.
Generally, there's, it gets a lot more complicated to get in there and do anything if it's not, you know, you get core of engineers involved, you can get a lot of different things that you have to do. Work on a creek or something, so.
Decisions and, you know, a lot of times they let you go on full stomach, they want to get you cut off. Which cannot disturb the banks, you can't change the direction, you can't change the depths, you know, so if there, if there is a project, it's a process. You know, something had to be done, it can be done, but. When you work with those kinds of entities, it's usually probably a year to get that whole project figured out and if they'll let you do it or not, you know, so.
And so we could easily just kind of send out a letter to. Few of the local contractors and get an R and look at RFP for the area if it exceeds the amount, you know, then we'd have to, you know, go farther, but.
From what I can see, you're actually did rough measurement, um, about twenty nine hundred feet would get us from four seventy fifth up around the curve. And beyond that just a little bit, I'm just guessing with what we can see on the map, so around twenty nine hundred feet.
Have you ever been on anything yet?
No, we start with you guys.
We just got the question a couple weeks ago, so.
We'd like to start with you guys first. Is any part of that a creek, any part of that?
No, this is considered a lateral mine. And it goes northwest, jumps back north again, and it continues west, so. Lateral mine, it is considered.
That's lateral nine, but everybody on DD six has got to pay in on on it.
Uh, actually, it'd be anybody that's.
Do we have a schedule for that ladder? That'll be the issue.
That might be the other issue.
Cause then we'd have to go to. Then we'd have to go to reclass, possibly reclassification and annexation and all that good stuff.
Which would involve an engineer?
What year? Last time they did like a reclass is there.
Where are you going with this? What what's this leading up to?
As little as possible.
Well, it needs to be.
Yeah, that's why we're having an informational meeting is, uh, you know, I don't know what.
Oh, I meant this lateral nine issue and and that as far as a reclassification.
Is it determine if there's a schedule on who pays for it, how how it affects you or how it affects, you know, we need to find that out, who actually uses lateral mine? That's who will pay for it.
So we, so the assumption is is that just because we got a letter doesn't necessarily mean that we pay for it or it does mean that we pay for it.
Know that you're just in the district.
Yeah, I said I said a whole card to everybody in the district, so.
It may not necessarily mean, you know, you could be, you could be on lateral ten if there is one, you're only paying on lateral ten.
Yeah, and I wasn't going into a work.
DD six or is it lateral nine?
It's it's a lateral nine inside of.
There's more of DD six then.
Ends up in our creek.
This is, well, is it down by Bergen, does that think like a creek then or that actually?
So I don't think. So you're talking right there at one oh five and DD, I think, I think it ends, I think it almost ends a little bit, yeah, actually a little north.
So you cannot touch that?
And that goes like a quarter or a half mile north of one oh five.
That's what I was gonna say, I thought Chouders or somewhere up there.
I got involved in it about three, four years ago and we cleaned the beaver dams out of there and we sent you the bill. And you rejected it, you said it was a natural stream.
Okay, could be.
Thanks for saving us money, right?
No, nobody will pay for it.
So who requested that then? I wouldn't even know it was request, I don't remember requesting that, I mean, somebody must have asked you to do it then.
Well, when we're working on what happened on that particular case, we were working for Gary Choder putting in a new bridge.
Oh, putting that bridge in?
For him.
That I remember.
And we, Bob Seeger, my son was working there and he seen all these beaver dams in there, so he. Told me about it and I told him, go ahead and take them out. Then I didn't know that it was natural streamed down there. I knew that we were DD six up above that. Amos Crow or. And Gary Choder's part of DD six, but I think it might be that his mind management.
That's what I'm thinking on that, yeah, that's.
Anyway, that's where we found out when we submitted the bill, it come back to us that it was not part of DD six.
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, the goal of this is to get even more from you guys too. We've got the original, somebody stopped, Ron stopped to see me and asked me about it. I drove up there, I did not drive out in the field and look any further, I could just see that, you know, there's about a quarter mile, but it's a little farther than that, which. Definitely should be taken care of, especially if it's on the bank like that, it's a good time to do it. And if you guys don't want to go any further, I think that's what we would do.
Yeah, I looked at it. My son yesterday on the inter- internet map, I think it was the picture, what did he say last year? And it show us the top end of that just all.
Could you mute yourself, please? Sure?
So the only thing was, this has not been reclassified, so, and I'll just put it out there, so if it's under the old schedule, we ran into this before where. It's, how they did it years ago is different. Sometimes people downstream actually ended up paying. A little bit more of the bill and I don't know how that works, but on a new classification, they wouldn't, so if you guys, you know, and I don't know what reclassification would cost.
Are you talking about the whole DD six or just lateral nine?
Yeah, well.
You'd reclassify the whole.
Yeah, because lateral nine lays inside a DD six, so you'd have to redo the whole district. And I'm not sure, it's a pretty good size.
Which one affects me? You know, you know, you know where I'm at.
Yeah, well, you're in.
You'd be in DD. And I have got that.
That'd be a lateral, wouldn't it?
Well, you're on, you're on DD nine.
It's gonna affect you. Or maybe it's gonna affect you.
So when I drove by there this morning, I noticed how the ditch bank on the, where the trees are, has sloughed down. And it just seems to me like it'd be. A lot better than maintain the ditch in the future if the stumps were.
Gone, and and that's okay, that's why we're here, I.
That's what we want to know what you want to do.
And you have silting.
Well, I'd say if you're gonna cut the trees down, let's do that.
Do it then.
Pull it out, reshape it, take it back to original design.
Which I still doubt would highly, right now at this point, would exceed that two hundred, so I mean, we could do it, it'd be just if you guys wanted to continue and go more. Um, I I would agree, I mean, if it's sloughing in there, it's a good time to do it when you, you know, those aren't, the gold cotton woods are not that hard to rip out when you got a big hole there and.
That's my personal feeling on it would be if they're gonna work in that section, that should just go back to DD six main. And re-clean it all the way up to the road there and then you got perfect dips that ranch. From where it comes off from DD six, it'd be number one ditch up to the road there.
So you think if we're gonna clean it, continue to the, to the main?
Yeah, if you, on that aerial, as you're looking as you're traveling west towards the main. That ditch isn't straight by any means. I don't know when last time I was touched, but.
And shouldn't you say?
Been worked in there for many years.
Quite a few years, I bet you forty, thirty, forty years ago, fifty. Gary did.
That was about fourteen. By him and then. And Arty's both ways.
I think it was back in fifteen, Kingland was at a cleaning.
Okay, fifty, you're on. Yeah, he did the one. And Arty's too.
There's a bunch of lat nine. There's a lat nine and there are schedules.
Good, up to date ones.
They're there. It could be originally.
Fifteen years, that goes right around.
So basically, what you guys are thinking then is start on seventy fifth street, take the trees.
Yeah.
Going north, make sure the dog go back to the main.
Gets into the main.
Clean, clean lateral mine between four seventy fifth up around to the main.
That would be the right way to do it.
I have, I have a question, so you do all that cleaning and you got this creek. By Bergons, doesn't that bottleneck everything still?
If it's full of beaver dams, you bet it does, but you know. I got one similar to that, Doug, and some ground I rented and then we can, we can clean so far, but I don't know, we can't go any farther with beaver dams.
Amos has been down there and cleaned them out now the last year or two. I talked to him near the weekend going. He said that he'd been down and pulled beaver dams off too.
So you can go as far as private property, even if it's a creek, we'll probably take beaver dams out without any problems, but you can't go into, oh, correct.
We have a problem up in our Minnesota ground where the ditch gets cleaned out and dipped out and all this stuff. But then on the Iowa side, the Army Corps of Engineers and VNR and said. That's natural, they they won't do anything, so guess what? Everything gets bottlenecked and it, and we have a ditch right there. And the stuff overflows into our ground, it's fifty five thousand acres going down there. And so you drive by there and you go, what's up with this farmer? He's got a ditch right there, he's got drawn out spots. You can't go anywhere, it's bottlenecked. That's where I'm saying with this stuff, if if there's something that can be done to. You know, if you're gonna pay this money, make sure it all works.
I, no, I don't disagree with you, yeah.
Yeah, because that's up north of me. It stopped by. So many, it stopped quite a ways from the Minnesota state line and it was a creek. Couldn't go, had to blend it in. And it was higher in the creek, so it just.
Is that higher than, you know, Craig paying a good portion of it?
Oh, yeah. I mean. Actually, it should work its way on up, you know, I mean, more, the more of that. Ditch you use, the more you're gonna pay. I mean, you know, people farther up the line should be actually paying, Craig would actually use less of it. I mean, he's only using that section and below. Or in same way here, I mean. So the guys up the line are actually probably gonna pay a little more, like for me, I'm on the top end, very top end of the drainage just. Anytime that ditch is cleaned, I'm gonna pay a big portion of it.
Well, that's my situation too, I'm on the very top end.
Part of the reclass.
Well, and and that's where sometimes the older classifications didn't take that into consideration, John, actually, people on the bottom paid more. It seemed like, and, cause we've run into this before, where we've had, it was better to go in and reclassify and. At the same time, reclassification's way cheaper than it was years ago, but. Still, I want to say three and a half, four bucks an acre.
I'm on the top end of DD six, now that lateral nine. I would get absolutely no benefit of it.
Right.
My question was, am I gonna be paying?
Technically, you shouldn't.
If you're under the new classification.
Yeah, because if you're on the main, you know, everybody uses the mains, everybody pays. If you're on that lateral, then you're paying for that lateral.
We have lateral schedules, so.
Yeah. There is, there is actual sep- separate schedules for the ladders, which is good, so.
I gotta know which one it is.
Lateral nine?
Um, there's lots of nines.
Oh, that's right, so.
Just nine, there's, I see nine access.
Section is that in, what section is that in, or? Twenty six. I see it.
Stupid numbers, my dude. So there's twenty six.
So where's twenty six right here? For four seventy fifth street.
Right there.
I've seen it running over here.
Would you guys be object to reclassifying this drainage district? Well, it it, what it does is it gets. Make sure then you're, yeah, and then, you know, with everybody tiled more. Maybe there's with annexation, maybe there's more land.
Oh, oh, there's trees there.
Yeah, that's good, well.
But it basically. Sets up the schedule for you to pay.
No, that's not, that's actually, it's.
First begin, what's involved in that class, reclassification?
Just boils down to those four steps, one of them is the type of soil you've got, whether you've got clay or sand and how fast to drain. Another one is how close, how much access, if the dish is going. Very accessible for you to dump into a quick and tile. That's plus.
Oh, there's gotta be water somewhere for that.
You saying you gotta go up and around.
So then it's.
But in, as, as lat goes go out, you only pay on those.
And then nine must go.
But if you're on lateral mine, you also pay from the main because lateral mine dumps into the main, then you pay that.
Everybody pays for the main.
And I think reclassification.
Or starts.
It always looks like it's going up instead of down.
It's gotten cheaper and I can't, you know, it depends on. I think we've seen some even as little as three, three and a half.
So what happens with the land that goes into a different drainage? I got an eighty that, uh, there's forty acres that goes into DD six and forty acres that goes into. Uh, the one going east of the silver. But I get assessed for, uh, eighty five acres.
So if it actually was proven during the reclassification, then it was split, it could be dropped down to a minimum, right?
Okay, so you're saying reclassifying just DD six, but what about the other one? Do I not get out of that?
You're gonna wanna.
In other words, you tiled into another one.
No, we didn't, it's, it's been classified that way for seventy years.
Yeah.
That's why we like to reclassify because. It's been a long time since a lot of it been done, it's usually fifty plus on everything we've gotten into and things have changed so much. It's just nice to go back, redo it. Make sure everybody's paying proper amounts and then we're done. Well, if it's split, there's some spots that do split and if, I don't know which, which farm is yours, but there's.
I know which one.
You'll pay a little bit into DD forty six, you'll pay a little bit into DD.
Somebody's paid, it's, it's actually seventy five acres and I end up paying for eighty acres worth of land.
That I don't, I don't know how you do that, I don't know how that, that should be that way.
So I would say during reclassification, I suspect it could come out, at least it would be reduced, and I, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a. But I would say it should be reduced to that.
I would think they'd be able to pick that up off the map.
And it should be, if, if it actually watersheds into forty six, for example, then it should probably at that time come out, I mean, I'm not, like I say, I'm not a lawyer. Yes.
And if we're only dealing with a little chunk of it.
I think it goes up.
Cause it goes down even more.
I think that would get straightened out during reclass. Yeah, you shouldn't be, have the same thing.
Cost involved with reclass.
So basically about, it's been around about four dollars an acre.
Yeah, it's.
So if there's five thousand acres in that. Uh, entire district, then that's, that's kind of how it figures out, that's what, that's rates we've been seeing on a lot of, we've done the last.
And they'll do an annex probably too at the same. Anybody benefits that's not in there at the present time, they'll annex that.
And some of these ditches, they, they do not actually have right away on them either, so sometimes you end up. You know, it was never done a hundred years ago, whenever this was done.
We got itches out there that. That put in and back in the late fifties or sixties.
Yeah.
And there were people that got all their water going through it, but they didn't participate in the program.
Right.
So they're not.
That's, that's a way to get them in too.
Yeah.
Reclassified, they would be, then people would automatically have to pay.
Yeah, and I'd still say we could be looking at these as two separate deals, we do the annexation, reclassification, we could do this project.
So the, the reclassification. When you do, what do you do, feasibility study or whatever you want to call it?
No, well, we're just to involve an engineer, Doug.
Where I'm going with it is that, uh, as mentioned, that some of this ground is not participating in it. Can you, when you, when you look into this, say, send a letter out or call or send a smoke signal or whatever and say, look. This is how many acres we're drawing into it, will that happen then?
Yep, that's the annex part of it. That area in, if they're benefit off that. What's going on there and they haven't been in the past.
They, they will survey the whole area.
Do you think, do you think that there's quite a bit of that?
So.
You had to take a wild guess.
So that, I couldn't give you the exact acres, but every district we've done usually involves bringing some in and. It, it, it's, yeah.
Bringing some in, like forty acres or?
I mean, yeah.
Seen a few that are, I'd say a couple hundred, obviously seen some that are just, yeah, smaller chunks like that. And then we've seen some that lose, that go out, they go to the district next door because it's actually draining that way instead of this one.
Or they can prove, yeah, they can prove they're tiled a different direction.
Yeah, so when it comes to that, you know, if you guys, if you're on that line, when you got mapping up stuff that's, you know, is right. If we have that info, that just helps out with the, with the reclassification. Because you can say, you know, if you're split here, I know it's tiled, but it goes in this direction, well, then that's good to know because then we can separate. So.
And sometimes you just select that they have any good tile.
Go that way, yeah.
It's a lot easier to dig with a backhoe than it was by hand.
That's a lot of it is the tile guys, just, we got better fall back and we're going that way, so. You know, and we don't know that here, you know, in the last seventy years, a lot of it's happened, so.
When something that actually in the other district and they're.
That, that, that's no pay to the other district.
We had one that tiled in without asking and then we had to go back in and. Reclassify, I mean.
Yeah, add it down, what, hundred twenty, hundred sixty, hundred sixty?
Quite a bit in that one.
I'm just one person, so.
You probably know where I'm talking. But anyway, like I said.
So if you guys want, we can, we can reach out to local contractors, get some pricing on this stuff. Um, and see what kind of a schedule we currently have for lateral mine. And then we can reach out to landlords in that schedule. Um, but I guess if you guys are okay, recommendation would probably be to get it reclassified, it's gonna be. You know, you guys are gonna pay a little bit, but then you know exactly what you're paying into and. From the future here on out, you know exactly what you're paying for.
And I guess other question, you guys know the district, so what other, like, ten years down the road, are you foreseeing any other work on that dish probably? Outlets, siltation, I mean, any of that going forward that you might want to address the next ten to fifteen years, it would probably be a good time to reclassify it and then it's done.
In other words, any other problems out there that you guys see?
Uh, DD six needs to be something done on the bottom end there. If we tried to get annexed in down to one oh five. Whole section of, on Bergen, it's natural stream right now.
That'd be a good question for the engineers, I'm sorry, I wouldn't know what to tell you on that, how, what's involved, I would agree, I mean, yeah, it's. If that's a problem area for your drainage up the line, there should be, there should be a way for us to address that, but.
None of us knew anything on it until this happened that. We sent a bill in on that.
Yeah.
Got fired back from here.
I mean, it'd be nice, we'll take it all the way to El Creek Marsh, to be honest, but.
I've been involved with them in.
Good luck.
County, same thing happened where supervisor had told me to go ahead and clean a section. And we turned in the bills and that, and all of a sudden. Found out that it wasn't, it was a natural stream in that section.
Tannerite and high-power rifles work real good on those too.
Yeah, it comes out of it.
There's nothing wrong with it, nothing illegal about it.
We can, we can get, we can at least look into that and get the info of what it would take.
Yeah.
You know, what the steps are if it's possible.
Should be done, because I don't think it's right to. See, they sold the acreage off now, the Bergon place. I think Mike Gaskell, if I'm not mistaken, has bought the farmland.
I think so.
So then he would be the one we'd have to send the bill to, Mike Gaskell, along with some private dips there.
Except for where Mike bought, which is where the ditch is. The guy that's got the acreage on.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
She's got like twenty three acres going on there, so.
Yeah, it's a narrow strip that goes right up that.
If you're paying this kind of money out.
Everybody.
You know, the three miles. Only thing has to work is if one part of it breaks down, then the whole system breaks down.
So that.
To a degree, and I'm, and I'm not trying to.
No.
Uh, I want everyone to benefit, but I, you know, it's just like, you clean this out and it's like, oh gee. That acre, those trees right there by Bergon, or it used to be Bergons, that has just been a real problem.
You can clean the rest of the ditch, like you say, and then if you got a problem down below, it's just gonna fill right back in.
Make it right, you know, if, if it's, probably isn't, but, you know.
Well, and then you should probably do more.
Well.
Thirty eight, there's forty six above it.
I guess, I mean, as far as, uh, reclassification, which, the more you do, I think the more you do. The lesser the cost gets to be, if I remember right, I wanna say they're even down a few bucks an acre and so. Yeah, you haven't been involved, you haven't, yeah. You're probably right, if none of that's been done up there, we should do the whole area.
We did two, but.
Yeah.
We got in there.
Yeah, hold it for segments, so.
That, is that a, an agreement, gentleman's agreement for now?
Where are we at with this stuff?
I, I, I'd agree, Craig, you, you want those trees out there and the ditch bank sloped up, I still think that can be separate from the annexation reclassification.
We'll, 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 we'll reach out to a couple local guys, take all the trees out, reshape the ditch back to original design. Um, and we can take it all the way over to the mains, and lateral mine will be back to where it should be. Um, and then we'll also reach out, look into classification.
And possibly, you know, can we take it down to one oh five, see what they say, the engineers and the lawyers can answer that and we can't.
And we can see what, what happened when we leave that district, are we able to continue cleaning, you know, then. If, if it allows, or if it happens, you know, a few years down the road, maybe that can all get cleaned out all the way to El Creek, and then everybody knows the outlet's good at least. Where the dish.
You just, you just go to the engineers and, and claim eminent domain.
Yeah, there you go. They jump in there and clean and ask for forgiveness, right?
That's right, we'll give you their number.
So, and we can, we can get some cost number or, uh, estimates out there before we do anything and, and reach back out to you guys.
Yeah.
But that's our, you guys, we, it's your money, we, you know, we want what you guys want.
Well, better luck, maybe doing something with the stream, but not, we'll, we'll never get down to El Creek, once we get there, that's probably gonna be a real issue. Yeah, I think we'll be lucky, we can get to one oh five, Mike, you're right.
If we got to one oh five, I think everybody, yeah.
You got enough.
Grade in some of that, but.
She slopes pretty fast.
That, that'll help, like, if we get some reclassification.
Right.
That's what we'll do, any other comments or questions from you, any other thing, does anybody have a preference to work some anything, I mean, we're just gonna, we try to stick with local guys on this stuff. Cost down, so.
Yeah, that's.
Probably reach out to like Elliot and Rod and Miss and whoever's in the area that wants to.
Look for three, four bids and just go from there.
Check with them, we'll check with, uh, Peters then, if they want to do some, anybody, anybody around, I mean, the more prices we get, the better it's gonna be for you guys, at least you might get some competitive bidding.
You're gonna need, uh, long reach hole of that, work that section.
That should get up.
Standard backhoe one region.
Okay.
So.
Good to know.
Okay, then I guess we'll reach out to the engineers and see what reclassification will kinda take and. We'll, we'll talk to you guys, maybe have another meeting here, again.
Can I get a copy of the, uh, full DD six with the lateral line on, how it broke out right now?
Schedule, yeah, Falcon, if I get that and, and get it out to you guys at some point. Go search through the books, I'm sure you'll find it, so.
Are you savvy with email?
Brian, what are you shaking your head for?
He's still got his flip phone, probably.
Yeah, well, that's the process we'll take, guys, and we'll reach back out to you again and.
But yeah, yeah, we should be able to do that.
In that case, I'll take much to adjourn.